Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 26th meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. I hope everybody had a meaningful Memorial Day yesterday. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask everybody to salute the flag with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could we have the roll call?
Wait, Commissioner Wyler?
Chair.
Commissioner Cohen? Vice Chair Romo? Chairman Span?
Here.
Commissioner McNair, I do have his absent. Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Present, and we do have a vacancy. Thank you.
Okay, do we have, somebody like to motion to approve the minutes from our February 25th meeting?
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes of the February 25th meeting.
Wyler? And a second? Do I have a second? I'll second the minutes, so. All in favor of approval of the minutes from last meeting? Raise your hand.
Approved.
We have five, yes, minutes are approved. Do we have any written communication?
No general written communication received.
Okay. How about oral communications? Just general oral communications? Well, no, just the general oral communication done, okay. Public hearing, we're gonna go right to G1. Before I introduce this, does anybody have any disclosures or recusals? Okay, downtown specific plan amendment and conditional use permit, PHG 19-0001 and PHG 19-0002. It's an amendment to the downtown specific plan to allow weddings and receptions as a conditionally permitted use within the Southern Gateway District.
Yes, good evening Chairman, Commissioners, it's Darren Parker, an associate planner here with the City of Escondido. Hopefully you've got that you're seeing in my PowerPoint presentation on your guys' screen. I believe that's a yes from all of yous?
Yes.
Thank you. The item this evening is an amendment to the downtown specific plan and approval of a conditional use permit. There are two components to the project being presented tonight. The first component is an amendment to the downtown specific plan to allow weddings and receptions as a conditionally permitted use within the within the Southern Gateway District, which currently prohibits this type of use. The second component of this project being presented is a conditional use permit to conduct weddings and receptions in the rear yard of an historic house located at 209 East Fourth Avenue. The slide that's being shown is the downtown specific plan. Within the downtown specific plan, that has been divided into seven districts. The amendment to the downtown specific plan will only occur in the Southern Gateway District. This slide shows the downtown specific plan table of permitted and conditionally permitted uses allowed in the districts. The slide also shows the table being amended to conditionally permit weddings and receptions in the Southern Gateway District only, which is outlined in red, which is the bottom portion of that slide. The second component of the project being presented tonight is a conditional use permit to host weddings and receptions on a parcel approximately .4 acres in size addressed as 209 East Fourth Avenue. The subject site is located on the southeast corner of Calmia and Fourth Avenue. The subject site is surrounded by residential to the east and to the south, commercial offices just to the north of the site, across Fourth Avenue, and a church parking lot to the west across Calmia. That's illustrated in that left slide. The site consists, oh, sorry. Let me go back. Somehow my PowerPoint froze. The site consists of a 2,875 square foot historical residence and detached garage. Just to the east of the residence, on the same parcel is a large yard area, approximately 5,000 square feet, which is surrounded on all sides by tall hedges, mature trees, and a solid fence along the alley side. The existing residence that there now has previously been converted to a dental office and has been in use for several years. 14 parking spaces currently exist on the site and are located off the alley. An additional four spaces are located in front of the garage. An additional 13 parking spaces exist in front of the subject site. The slide to the left illustrates the layout of the property and the parking. Weddings and receptions will primarily use the large outdoor area for weddings and receptions, and the building would be available for use by the wedding party and guests. Wedding receptions, or sorry. My slides keep skipping here and freezing. Additional information, background, and history of the project and the project site is as follows. The downtown specific plan was authorized for processing by the City Council on June 18, 2018. In 1996, the downtown specific plan was amended to allow weddings and receptions within the underlying districts of the specific plan, subject to a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit was approved in 1997 to conduct a limited number of outside weddings and receptions in the rear yard of the property. Weddings and receptions have not been conducted at the site for over the past several years, and the previous CUP has now expired. A comprehensive amendment to the downtown specific plan was adopted in 2013, and weddings and receptions within the Southern Gateway District no longer were listed as a conditional use permit. Staff's recommendation to the City Council is to approve the proposed downtown specific plan, approve the conditional use permit, and adopt environmental determination for the project. With that, staff concludes its presentation.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions to staff? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Parker. I've got a couple of questions. In the presentation and in the staff report, you indicated that when the downtown specific plan was amended back in 2013, it removed weddings and receptions from this area. Do we have any history on why that was removed?
That we've looked back through the history, and it looks like it just was not added at the time. There was no specific reason why it was removed at all from there.
Okay. Okay, because, I mean, the only concern that I had was whether or not that, you know, this property or even the churches or other areas or other uses in that area, if there were actually problems with weddings and receptions and complaints. It didn't appear to be the case in the staff report. I just wanted to get some sort of confirmation that that was true. I do have one other question, and it's in Section C of the staff report, where we list kind of the details of the request. And number eight, regarding the bathrooms, and it says there here that portable facilities provided by the renter is needed. And my question is really, it looks like, you know, there's two existing bathrooms with a third one that's going to be installed, at least that's what's shown on the floor plan. With three bathrooms and a limit of 73 people, it doesn't seem like there would be the need for a portable facility. And I'm just wondering why that was kind of included.
Yeah, how that kind of reads on number eight, it says "as needed", which we don't feel it's probably gonna be needed. But if there's an issue with existing bathrooms or something like that, then that might need to be provided at the time.
Okay.
Do that.
And then there were no letters or anything from adjacent property owners other than what was included in the staff report, where there were some concerns, but those concerns have been addressed, is that correct?
There was two concerns about last year regarding the two property owners, one being the church site and one being an office site across the street, that was addressed in the staff report regarding parking and potential noise issues and things like that. But we have addressed those, and we have not heard anything from those two owners.
Okay, that concludes my questions, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions to staff? Commissioner Romo?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that we are using the street parking as part of their 17 space or 27 spaces?
As needed, yeah, if it's needed. There is currently diagonal parking along Fourth Avenue and Calmia that's right in front of the property.
Is that standard throughout that area, that they can use street parking as counted spaces? Or is that an exception?
It's not really an exception, but it is public parking there.
Right, so my question though is, is it traditional that the city utilizes street parking in the parking count in that area? Or is this an exception to the traditional parking standards and codes?
Through the Chair, if I may respond to that, this is my strong Director of Community Development. The recent conversation about how to utilize on-street parking spaces really was broached with the consideration of the IV mixed-use project. They provided on-street parking spaces to accommodate the residential development. But through the conditional use permitting process, the authority of the Planning Commission has the opportunity to look at the operational characteristics of each individual site and the environment surrounding that proposal, a proposed use, to determine land use compatibility. In this case, there is approximately 14 spaces provided onsite and then immediately adjacent to the property along the street frontage, an additional 13 street spaces. So in terms of the functionality of the use, those visitors or customers or wedding attendees would be able to utilize those spaces. So the conditional use permit does enable the discussion of modification of parking requirements and rightsizing the parking provisions for that particular use.
And that can be utilized with any owner in that area if they so desire it, if the Commission decides it's appropriate, is that correct, Mike?
They are public parking provisions, so they're not reserved or earmarked for any specific use. Given proximity, it would make sense that this use would probably be utilizing those spaces because it's immediately adjacent to their property, but it is public parking. So that's why the staff report clearly differentiates between the parking provisions. Should there be any future modifications to the street scale or limitation of the parking provisions, the onsite parking is what would be preserved in that sense.
And 73 is the maximum occupants, correct? I think that was out in the report, and then also there's no alcohol?
There, no, that has been restricted, no alcohol.
Okay, and then also the music is no DJs, is that correct?
No live or amplified music is allowed.
Okay.
So we're looking at basically acoustical only?
Boring wedding. No, I shouldn't, anyways. And then, I did look at the map, and that one neighbor across the alley didn't have any concerns at all? That's the only resident that seemed nearby, or was that wrong?
Not across the alley, no. As in the nearest person that had a concern was across Fourth Avenue, which is a current office building.
Okay, all right, thank you. Very nice report, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but my slides kind of froze there on me, so I apologize.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions to staff? Okay, seen none, thank you, Mr. Parker, that was great. Do we have any, have we received any oral, well, the written communications?
We do. So I have, the first public comment is from Dirk Reschley, 230 East Fourth Avenue, and his comment is as follows. "We are registering our opposition and concern for the project plan PHG 19-0001 and PHG 19-0002 before the Planning Commission. I am the owner of an accounting firm that has been in business since 1982. We've seen what happens when a wedding happens at the Wolford Ting House, we have lived it. Below are some key points that concern us. Direct impact: The office is open many weekends during the year. Noise and fending off vehicles trying to park in our parking lot was distracting to our business operations in the past. Trash was left behind after the events concluded. Parking concerns: Street parking is very limited. We disagree with the findings of the staff report regarding there being ample parking. During the day, the street is full with a mixture of cars that represent employees of area businesses and those who live in the neighborhood. After 5:00 to 6:00 PM, as employees go home, occupants of the nearby apartments are returning from work and occupy the spots. I leave here sometimes at 9:00 PM and can attest to this. Vehicles are parked on the curb in front of my office and in the diagonal spaces across the street. In summary, there's little to no parking on this block most hours of the day. There's little room for additional cars associated with weddings. Further, I don't believe the staff report contemplates the planning aspect of a wedding venue and the resulting additional vehicle traffic that would result. Think of the caterers, florists, sound team, prospective customers, ministers, and the additional yard work that would be required. This would become new additional traffic if weddings were allowed at the Wolford House, inconsistent with existing businesses. We are in a neighborhood with two churches, widely varying businesses, a home, a duplex, and apartments on the next block that use the street parking every day. A wedding venue business will create additional traffic congestion on weekends that will be in addition to what already the two churches already create with their services and meetings. During the week, it'll be even worse with the addition of school traffic and the business traffic we already have. After school, numerous groups of parents and children walk down Fourth Avenue, past my office, heading north towards the residential areas. This puts those families at risk if vehicle traffic increases. Concurrent use: Because a wedding may occur on a weekday, will Rocco's Dental still operate? If Rocco's employees are present, this will reduce the total parking available for a wedding. Noise: Weekend events would be problematic. Looking at the businesses along Fourth Avenue between Jupiter and Calmia, you will find professional offices of attorneys, CPAs, orthodontics, and a periodontal dental office. Increased traffic, music, and crowds are simply not conducive to existing businesses. There was active yard work and some light construction coming from the Wolford property during the days that I was working on this comment document. This downtown area enjoys high utilization of the buildings by professional service providers. During non-business hours, parking is taken by overcrowded residential units in the area. To add a wedding venue now would create additional vehicular traffic, noise, and complications not currently present. In summary, a wedding venue does not work for this area." Our next public comment is from Margaret Reschley, and she says, "I am opposed to project PHG 19-0001 and 19-0002. I am the owner of the building at 230 East Fourth Avenue. I am opposed to any further burdening of the already overcrowded on-street parking that exists at the present time. The immediate area is experiencing oversaturation of the street parking by businesses allowed to operate without their own dedicated parking for staff or clients. After business hours, the available street parking is taken over by overflow from the multifamily apartment buildings on Fifth Avenue. In addition, a nearby apartment complex under construction on Second Avenue purposefully will underbuild their parking area with the stated purpose of use of surrounding area public on-street parking. Some of the businesses in the area operate on weekends. The churches have dedicated parking lots, but should be entitled to a fair amount of public on-street parking. This project seems to dedicate 13 public spaces to the exclusive use of the wedding venue. Does this give the wedding venue the right to block off non-street parking at their discretion? In order to preserve our open dedicated parking lots, my building, as well as other buildings in the area, have had to build fences and post tow-away signage. It is well-known that a vehicle in search of the closest parking spot knows no boundaries. If there's an open space available, albeit posted, they will park under the theory that the space is not being used. Sad, the father of the bride watching his car being towed in the middle of a ceremony, please reject this plan." And the last public comment received is from James Preston, and he says, "There is not ample parking for wedding venue, just street parking. No more public comments."
Thank you. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask for Commissioner comments, discussion? Commissioner Romo?
Sorry, this is just a question. Is the two comments that we received, were they from the same family? The two negative comments besides Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wyler?
Yes. Have there been any complaints regarding parking in this area? I mean, you know, I noticed there are various businesses, certainly the apartment complexes, as well as the churches. So I'm wondering right now, have there been, you know, in the recent past, complaints about lack of parking?
Back in 1997, when they first got the CUP to do this same use, they conducted two kind of like trial tests first. And that event went without no hitches or hiccups regarding parking or noise or anything like that. But they haven't done any large venues for a long time there because it's been used as a dental office since then. But I'm not aware of any parking issues, no.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. When the prior CUP, when that was approved, was there a limitation on the number of people?
Yes, and it's the exact same limitation that's being proposed today, which is 73 occupants.
Okay, thank you.
So, just a comment, if they had continued to host weddings, we wouldn't even be having this discussion because their CUP wouldn't have expired, is that correct?
That is correct, except for when, back in 2013, when we amended the specific plan. For some reason, the wedding and receptions were taken out of there, so it might have been a non-conforming use at that time.
But if they had continued to do what they were doing, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have affect, even though that it was not included, it would have still been a good CUP?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. One, yes, Commissioner Garcia?
I thought I read somewhere in the report that the dental office will be closing and they're gonna move, if it's approved, to just weddings? Or did I misunderstand or misread that?
Yes, so the dental office won't be moving out of there. And it'll only be used for wedding and receptions, is what it'll be used for.
Thank you.
Okay, another thought I had, if you asked 50 people downtown if we had a parking problem, they would be 50, yes, we do have a parking problem, we're always gonna get that. The fact that this is a CUP and if there are any problems, we can go back and review it. I feel confident that this would not be a problem in the neighborhood. I get through there quite a bit, and except on Sunday, there's always parking available, so I don't have any problem with this. Any other comments, or Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Chairman. As a pastor that has conducted numerous weddings, parking is a problem, especially in events like this, or venues like this. And it's an issue when you're running late and you need to get there and you're looking for any space. Now, I am very careful of making sure that I only park where I'm supposed to park, I never pull into somebody else's property to park. I just hope that unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to drive through the area and see if there is parking or not, but I trust the staff that if they're telling us that there is parking available there for weddings, I think that that should be important for us. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, being that this is a conditional use permit, and there are problems, complaints, concerns from the neighborhood, then those complaints can go to code enforcement. Code enforcement can see if they can work with the venue. And then, after that, if the complaints continue, it comes back to this body for potential revocation. So it seems like we would still have leverage to make sure that this does not negatively impact the neighborhood if it becomes an issue. So personally, I don't have a problem with this.
I agree with you completely, and also that it would encourage the people that are running the venue to keep peace in the neighborhood also, because it is a conditional use permit and it can be reviewed. Any other comments? Commissioner Romo?
There's that other wedding venue we approved, and I had it marked in my notes. Anyways, on the CUP, it looks like they have to have four staff onsite, and there's four reserved spaces, four staff. And then of that four, it sort of mentioned half-heartedly that one, they would be managing their own security. Whereas the other, I want to call it the blue, I don't know, I forget what it's called. It's over there by the Toyota dealer. That one had to have designated security, and does the staff believe this will not have that kind of requirement necessary?
This venue's a lot smaller, and then if you look at the conditions and then the details of requests, security will be provided as needed, based upon who is renting. And then, to answer the previous questions that came up, there are conditions of approval, I think it's condition number 15, that allows the, I believe the CUP to be revoked or suspended or modified if it causes any issues at that time.
Any other questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion. Mike, Commissioner Cohen?
Hey, before you get to that, I finally got online.
Yes, Jim.
So, I didn't have any questions on this one, I just wanted to get counted for present.
Okay. Welcome. Mr. Cohen, did you have a question? Did you have a comment?
Well, you just, Mr. Parker, you said that that there would be security based on who was renting it. Didn't it really be based on the amount of people that were gonna be there? Rather than who was actually renting it? What's the basis of security, I guess is what I'm getting at?
I mean, it's not really security, it's more of, if there's catering or management or things like that, it could be, you know, the management of the event as well, not just security. just security. Um, but there, 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 there's nothing i- in the conditions or in the details, um, of what they're proposing that pu- could potentially need security at all. Um, I mean, there's no sale of alcohols or consumption of alcohol as well, um, so there's no need of security there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wyler? Did, did you?
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and looking at the conditions of approval and comparing those to the staff report, um, I, I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to suggest a minor change in the staff report, and that would be under section C, item eleven regarding alcohol service. It says restricted. I think that we should clarify that and say prohibited. Um, so I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, PHG nineteen zero-zero-zero-one and PHG nineteen zero-zero-zero-two with a change to the staff report under item C eleven, to change the word, uh, for alcohol service from, uh, restricted to prohibited.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, well, it's motioned, moved and seconded, uh, do you want to just take a hand vote? Okay.
Alrighty, Commissioner Wyler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roma, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairman Span, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner McNair, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Garcia, how do you vote?
Yes.
So we have unanimous, six votes, approved.
So, the downtown specific plan amendment and conditional use permit, PHG nineteen dash zero-zero-one and PHG nineteen dash zero-zero-zero-two is approved unanimously. Moving on to item two, zoning code amendment, AZ twenty dash zero-zero-zero-three. It's an amendment to the City of Escondido zoning code to modify the types and sizes of signage allowed at car wash facilities. Do, does anybody have anything to disclose or recuse? Yes, Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, unfortunately, I have to recuse myself from this item due to a, uh, any appearance of a conflict of interest because the applicant is a client of mine.
Thank you.
Uh, question, Chair, um, how do I recuse myself?
That is a good question. You're supposed to leave the room.
And, uh, mute my mic?
I'll address, uh, staff. What do you think? Just mute his mic and, can he stay there, or does he have to turn his, leave?
Uh, this is the Director of Community Development, Mike Strong. Um, I, since there is no other business related to, uh, Commissioner Wyler's participation, he can probably just exit the meeting. Uh, but if he chooses to stay on and observe, he can either do that with his, uh, video conference and audio features disabled.
Okay. Commissioner Wyler, did you hear, hear that?
Yes, uh, I would prefer to stay on to listen until, uh, this item is over, um, if that would be acceptable to the Chair.
I, I have no problem with that. Okay. Coi, can we have the, uh, staff presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. I have a PowerPoint for you. I'll just pull it up. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, this is, thank you, this is item D two, it's AZ twenty dash zero-zero-three, and it is a zoning code amendment for car wash signage. Uh, signage is regulated by Article sixty-six, which is the sign ordinance, um, of the zoning code. Currently, menu signs are allowed only for drive-through restaurants, um, with a sign permit. They are not allowed for any other use. The proposed amendment would modify Article sixty-six to allow menu signs at automated car washes. It would allow one sign per stacking lane, and sign would be limited to twenty-four square feet and six feet in height. Also, directional signs are exempt from Article sixty-six entirely, as long as they're limited to two square feet in area and three feet in height. Um, exempt means that you're allowed to have them without needing a sign permit. Directional signs are defined as signs with words such as entrance, in, out, basically any sign that provides wayfinding to visitors of the property, or containing arrows or characters indicating traffic directions used either in conjunction with such words or separately. The proposed amendment would modify Article sixty-six and Article sixty-one, which is the Administration and Enforcement section of the zoning code, to allow directional signs exceeding the above size limits only at car wash facilities, with zoning administrator approval of a comprehensive sign program. A little background on how we're here with this today. Uh, staff received a request from the NAMAL group to install digital menu signs for two of three stacking lanes at Mr. F- I'm sorry, Mr. Fomi's Car Wash at six-one-five West El Norte Parkway. Um, the applicant's request also includes directional signage up to eighteen square feet in area per sign, and mounted fifteen and a half feet above ground to direct customers of different types, i.e. members versus non-members, to the correct lanes.
I, I'm sorry, could I interrupt you for just one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've, I've been informed, Commissioner Wyler, would it be possible for you to just log off for this? I, I've been told that it, you, you're supposed to, um, not be involved with it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. This, this is, uh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to clarify, I think the proper way of doing this, Commissioner Wyler, and maybe he's already, uh, off, but to actually log out, typically you would be leaving the room. This would be counting as leaving the room on this online forum. You can still, you know, there's able, just like a member of the public, you can access this online and view it that way, but we want it once you, you know, in the room. And so, just to be, just to do it correctly, I think that's the way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, and, and that's fine. Um, how do I leave? And how do I come back?
Well, I think, I think as the Community Development Director said, there is no, uh, there is no further business after this item. Um, so one option is, I don't think you need to come back. The other would be, um, to, uh...
Watch it on TV?
Yeah, you can, you can, you can watch it, just like a member of the public, and see, and then pop back in, that way.
Very good. Okay, thank you. I will, I will do that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so during early conversations with the applicant, it was discovered that there's at least one additional car wash in Escondido that has already installed, uh, digital menu signs at their own business, uh, without planning approval or, uh, billing permits. So, we do believe that there is, uh, demand for this type of sign at car washes in Escondido. And staff recommendation, we recommend that city coun- recommend to Planning Commission, that they recommend to City Council that the proposed amendment be approved to Article sixty-six and Article sixty-one of the Escondido zoning code, and adopt the environmental determination. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Does any of the, uh, Commissioner, do any of the Commissioners have any questions, the staff? Yes, Commissioner Roma?
Yeah.
Who, who was first? Did, Commissioner Roma, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Commissioner Cohen?
Uh, just a quick question. On the, on the directional signage that is listed at two square feet, I, I do signage every day, and two square feet is, is not a visible sign to begin with. I know we're asking for more and being approved, but I can't even believe that that's part of a, of anything. Cause I, I can't see very far, and two square feet is, that's a one-by-two sign at most. And so, how do, how does that change? How do you, how do we end up changing that, or can this change that, or will this change that as well?
Uh, the proposal being considered tonight is just to change it for car washes. Um, the thinking is that for a car wash, you're entering the side in your vehicle, you're probably staying in your vehicle while you're getting the service that you paid for. So larger signage is probably appropriate for this type of use because you need to be able to see where you're going, from where you're behind the wheel of your car. Um, I, expanding it to other uses is something we could probably consider, maybe in the next sign ordinance amendment. I don't know if Mike wants to speak to that, but yeah.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious. I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're going for bigger.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, the staff? Commissioner Roma?
Just, this really doesn't have anything to do with Mr. Fomi. It's the other, Mr. Fomi is the current one, correct? It's, it's really to do with who's, who is doing the final occupancy review of the car wash that allowed the uncoated signs to be allowed in? And if so, how does that happen? Just out of curiosity. Is that planning? Is that building? Is that, who, who does that?
This is Mike Strong, Director of Community Development. I'd like to, uh, respond to that.
Please. I'm just, just a curious question, not...
The, the signs were installed after occupancy, uh, so typically occupancy was issued, uh, by the Building Inspection Division. Uh, there is a current code enforcement, a notice violation on the property, um, and so this could either be self-correcting with the ordinance changes and, and the applicant coming in to obtain duly-issued sign permits, or in the event the ordinance is not supporting of those existing, uh, signs that's constructed at that facility, they would have to remove them. Um, so typically, uh, typically when a shell or tenant improvement is final, um, it won't be until after occupancy or, or gearing up for occupancy that the signs are installed, uh, so that's what happened in this case.
I was just curious, that's all.
Okay, any other questions, the staff? Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
No public correspondence.
Nope, no correspondence, okay. And, uh, Mr. Watson, as the applicant, are you, uh, here to speak, or are you just ex-Commissioner Watson?
I am, in fact. I just wanted to say a couple of words. Good evening, Chairman Span, Planning Commissioners, and city staff. I am pleased to appear before the Escondido Planning Commission regarding the actual triple-oh-three item on tonight's agenda. I'm very grateful from Ms. Dolmazar's report. I found her always thorough and just analysis to be an accurate representation of the matter at hand. And again, it's always a feeling and pleasure here before you while you consider this item. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, the applicant? Okay, seeing, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and, uh, ask for Commissioner comments. I see this is just a cleanup, um, item that's going to take care of another problem and correct a situation that, uh, was overlooked in the first place. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion approved?
I'll make a motion to approve AZ two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-three.
Okay, and I see Mr. Garcia is seconding it. Is that correct? Okay, it's moved and seconded. Can we have a vote?
Alrighty, we'll, uh, go through each Commissioner here. Commissioner Wyler, how do you vote? We noting that he did recuse himself. Commissioner Cohen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roma, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairman Span, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner McNair, how do you vote? And Commissioner Garcia, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Alright, we have five yeses, so it is approved.
Okay, so zoning code amendment AZ twenty dash zero-zero-zero-three is approved. We have no current business tonight. And I don't think we have any oral communication. So, on that note, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.